I was in the air.
Would you call this meeting to order if these riots will pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members Burgoyne, Girbaugh, Seibokanig, Roth, and Mayor Protem Tahar. Mr. Rhodes is absent this evening. He is visiting an ill family member, and I would ask that you keep him and his loved ones and your thoughts and prayers. From staff, we have City Manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, City Treasurer Bennett, DPW Director Fordice, Police Chief Rennick, and Parks and Rec -- Director Scruggs. And for the rest of you in the audience this evening, if you would please sign in in the back, we would greatly appreciate that. I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I've got a couple favors to ask, one of which is to move the last item under New Business to become the first item under New Business, just to accommodate a guest who's here this evening. And then the second, after speaking with Mr. Roth, the second-to-last item under the discussion portion of the agenda can be removed. We're not prepared to discuss that at this time, although the planning process still continues and there will be subsequent updates. And it doesn't need to be added as a discussion item, but actually, under reports and other announcements, Mr. Campbell's going to talk about a work group that he and I and staff have been discussing, and hopefully you will allow him the ability to proceed. So with those having been noted, Mr. Burgoyne?
Also, the change to item 1496 is that we have no memo, right? We had a -- an agenda with a different wording.
I changed. I left everybody out.
Excuse me. Thank you for bringing that up. In fact, there is a new agenda that's been placed at your seat earlier this afternoon by the clerk that makes note of that. If there are no other additions to the agenda this evening, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. At this time, I would seek a motion to excuse the absence of Councilmember Rhodes.
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tahar, and I'll let Mr. Girbaugh be the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We have two presentations this evening, the first of which is the MRPA Volunteer Award, and I'm going to ask Ms. Scruggs to come up and present.
Thank you. I'm asking Bruce Whitfield to join me. March 19th, Michigan Recreation and Parks Association held its annual Community Service Awards in East Lansing. And community service represents dedication, service, and commitment. This is why the Celine Parks and Recreation Department nominated Bruce Whitfield. Bruce is Celine Parks and Rec's MVV, and you might ask yourself, what is that? It's the Most Valuable Volunteer. He volunteers several hours each weeks -- each week in many capacities. He cleans up weight rooms. He's a pro at recycling. He helps at all of our special events with setup and cleanup. He hauls tables and chairs. Bruce is in his element most when he's outside, and he's -- in the warmer months, he's mowing our lawns and weed whipping and sprucing up the property. And he's also an ace at snow shoveling. This winter, he got his shovel out and he kept all of our sidewalks cleared and came in on the weekends and, I mean, I'm telling you, he is our MVV. And Celine is a -- or, I'm sorry, Bruce is a Celine native. His real job is at R&amp;B Industries, and -- which is only a half a mile from the Rec Center. And when he's not working there, he's helping us out. And he participates in golf, track and field, which is tomorrow over at the Celine High School, and basketball for Special Olympics. He also enjoys spending his time at his family's cottage up north, which they're going Memorial Day weekend, I've been informed. And if you didn't know this, but Bruce tends to be a little bit shy, but don't let him fool you. He really is quite friendly, and he's become a very valuable member of our family at the Rec Center. And we just wanted to make sure that he was honored properly and given this presentation and represented to City Council. And we just want to congratulate Bruce on receiving this very prestigious statewide award. So congratulations, Bruce. All right. And this is his award that he was presenting. So I would like you to -- anyone want to take pictures besides me?
I think Tran probably does. Austin, yeah?
Here, turn around, buddy. All right. You gotta smile a little bit. Like you mean it. Anyone else?
Who's the girl in the green?
Okay. Big smile for me. Absolutely. All right.
Thank you.
And I would like to say a special thanks to his family for being here. His mom and dad came out to East Lansing to enjoy the banquet, and Todd was there as well. But his other family, his sister, brother-in-law, and two nieces are here as well, so thanks for coming.
Very nice, yes. Thank you so much for coming. And Bruce, congratulations and thank you for all that you do at our recreation complex. It's greatly appreciated. And Ms. Scruggs, thank you. Thank you for organizing this. This was very nice. And up next, we have another extraordinary community volunteer. Karen Ragman would like to address Relay for Life. Karen, please come forward.
I'd actually like to -- I'm now the speaker this evening. I'd like to introduce the Relay Committee, Sasha Zerens, Gretchen McCann, and of course, the infamous Jeff Fallon.
Well, first, I'd like to thank you for having us. We are from the Celine Relay for Life Committee, and Karen is handing around flyers that has the information about the event on it. We're here to just give you a brief overview of what the event is, as well as to ask you to come join us that day. But I'll let Gretchen speak first about her experience.
Last year was my first year on the planning committee for the Relay for Life. Within a two-month period of time, I was given bad news about five of my friends who had been diagnosed with cancer or given the diagnosis of a recurrence of cancer, and it was terrifying and very upsetting. And as you all know, because I'm sure every one of you has been touched by cancer, there's not a whole lot you can do except support them. But Sasha asked me if I wanted to be on the planning committee, and it seemed like the perfect way to kind of express my unhappiness with the news that I had gotten. So once I got on the committee, though, I found the happiest job that I could do, and that is making the survivor breakfast on the day of the event. So I'm the one that gets to make the special treats for the cancer survivors and their caretakers on the day of the event, and it's extremely gratifying. But the rest of the day is gratifying as well. And I encourage you either to join a team. I also have a team this year. I'm the Celine Main Street Team Coordinator, so I'm looking forward to that. And if anybody's interested in joining our team, if anybody wants to put together a team, I encourage you to do so. But if you just want to go and find out what it's all about, I encourage you to show up that day. This event is not about fundraising, although that is a component, as we all know. But when you get there, this is an event that's about fun and entertainment and bonding and sharing and, you know, there's some tears and there's some sadness about those we've lost. But in the end, it's about honor and awareness and sharing this part of our life, which is sort of not necessarily inevitable, but it does reach us in many ways. And I just want to say, we would love to have you as our guests. This is a community event, and I don't think people really realize that so much. But so, and can anybody tell me what the date is on that?
June 28.
Oh, yeah. Okay, June 28. So anyway, join us for that day, and please listen to the rest of our group here to get some more encouragement for your joining us.
Thank you, Gretchen. So as she said, this is a really meaningful event to a lot of people, and so we really want to have as many people from the community present. We already have a couple teams that are already signed up from the community, such as Celine Main Street. But what we'd really like to see is kind of a combined team that maybe has Celine City Council, DPW, Fire Department, Police Department, and Community Ed. We hope that among those people, there might be enough people that are interested in creating a team. If you are, you can go on the website, which is on the flyer, or you could also come talk to me. And it's not a huge commitment. We just want people to be there. So if you can't be there for 24 hours, that's fine. Come for two hours. Come walk for two hours, and you will not regret it. And so Jeff has one more thing he'd like to share with you guys. But again, thank you for having us.
They told me when I come to City Council, I need to be prepared, so I'm ready. This year, I am going to be heading up a new team for Relay for Life. It's going to be Team Celine. We're going to build a team there for people that really don't have a place to go, their business isn't sponsoring the event or being part of the event, having their own team. It's just for anybody out there who wants to sign up, sign up on the website and make some type of commitment, whether it should be out there for an hour or two hours or whatever. We figured this might be a new way, because our goal, really more than the money even this year, gotta have the money, but is to see that track filled. We want to see it filled with a lot of people. And we're going to try to build up to about 400 people would be our goal for this year. And if we could get to that point, we would love it, and we appreciate all your help you can. Tweeter us, Facebook us, you know, get it out there, because it's getting the word out is the biggest part of the battle a lot of times, and we hope to see you guys there.
Thank you again for having us.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it very much.
Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions from City Council?
I think we all support what you do, keep up the good work, and specifically, if there are things that we can do to be of assistance, you be sure to let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening. That concludes our presentations for this evening. At this time, we move on to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? There are no citizen comments. We'll proceed with the consent agenda. Actually, before we proceed with the consent agenda, I just want to make a very brief comment, but I don't want to remove the items from the consent agenda for a long, protracted discussion, unless that's the wish of any member of City Council. But you will see three motions relating to the establishment of three separate subcommittees on the Celine Addiction Prevention Task Force. I am very, very pleased on how those three subcommittees came together. There are some truly exceptional and talented people who volunteered to serve, and I think that's indicative of how seriously this community takes the problems of substance abuse and addiction. So, having said that, the following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Seibokanig. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to a public hearing, item 14-96. This is Special Assessment for Fire Protection fiscal year 2014 to 2015. This will be a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Mayor Protem Tahar?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. This public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would wish to speak?
Moved to close.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. It's been properly moved to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The public hearing is now closed. The final motion will be a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt Resolution Number Two, Special Assessment for Fire Protection 2014 to 2015, approving the estimated amount of $342,991 for fire protection for fiscal year 2014-2015.
Motion to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Any discussion? Mr. Burgoyne?
This is the most cost-effective way to do it, because we still have personal property out there so that the industries do pick up their share for protection of the personal property, and this decreases the amount that residential homeowners have to pay. So this seems to be the most effective way.
I would agree, Mr. Burgoyne, and I would add to that. You'll see the amount stipulated in the motion, $342,991. That's our portion of the Celine Area Fire Department's budget. We, as citizens, receive an exceptional product and service for that amount, and I've said this time and time again, if we had to pay for a fire department out of our own pocket, that wasn't a collaborative effort, that did not include three of our neighboring municipalities, we would be paying substantially more. So this is a very, very good system, and like Mr. Burgoyne said, this is the best way to fund our portion of their budget. If there's no further discussion, it's been properly moved by Burgoyne, seconded by Roth, to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We moved New Business Item 14-104 to the top of the New Business section of our agenda, and this is the Swisher Listing Renewal. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 6, 2014 memo from City Manager Campbell, and to approve or not to approve the request to renew the Swisher Commercial Realty Agreement for another 12 months. Is there a motion?
I'll move to acknowledge receipt.
Okay, start with that. Mr. Girbaugh has moved to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Roth. Mr. Campbell, do you want to begin, and then we can have Mr. Caparisi come up and make comment and address any questions that council members may have?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As my memo states, kind of time flies. Before you know it, it's been 12 months since the city entered into agreement with Swisher to represent our industrial and commercial properties here in the city that the city owns. He was just -- Mr. Caparisi was just here recently giving an update to council, and so he comes back again with a request to renew for another 12 months to see if we can have any success with any of these properties.
Mr. Caparisi, do you care to comment at all? I know you were at a previous meeting and talked at length of a...
Yeah, a doctor just several weeks ago gave a update for town. I really have nothing to report other than I'm always continuing to be marketing these properties.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Campbell regarding his memo? No? Any discussion? Mr. Girbaugh?
I know we're renewing this for another 12 months. Would it be better to have -- is there some stipulation? I forget what it is. Is it quarterly he has to report to us, or every six months?
We originally talked quarterly, but so I think, Mr. Caparisi, if you had any preference or if it doesn't matter, the frequency?
Quarterly works fine, except I think...
We did. And that's probably -- that's more staff's than his.
No, I just wanted to make sure we're doing unreview for this, so that's fine. That was my question.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Any additional questions or items for discussion? No? Then, Mr. Girbaugh actually divided the motion, so we'll take the first one first. It was properly moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Roth, to acknowledge receipt of the May 6, 2014 memo from City Manager Campbell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve or not to approve the request to renew the Swisher Commercial Realty Agreement, excuse me, for another 12 months.
I move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Discussion? Okay. Hearing no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Okay. Mr. Fordice, do you want to come up here, because you've got the next six motions? So we'll start with New Business Item 14-96. This is the refurbishment of a 2001 dump truck/snow plow. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated April 25, 2014, from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the purchase of equipment and installation services for Truck and Trailer Specialties in the amount of $34,874 to replace the dumped body, hoist, salt spreader, hydraulic system, and rear suspension on the 2001 Sterling Dump Truck and Snow Plow. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roth. Mr. Fordice, do you care to comment at all, sir?
Certainly. We've had a replacement of a snow plow in the budget for -- or on the wish list for several years. It's been pushed off due to budget constraints, and started looking at some other ways to improve our snow clearing fleet, and came up with the refurbishment idea and had originally budgeted, I think, $90,000 for this. When we really got into the meat and the details of what we could do with this piece of equipment, we streamlined it quite a bit and really focused on the parts that have definitely given us trouble on this particular unit. So looking at a new dump body, a hoist for that body, the rear salt spreader, the hydraulic system on this truck is kind of worn out. We'll replace that, and we've also had a fair amount of difficulty with the rear suspension, so that will be replaced as well. And utilized the My Deal program, competitively bid suppliers that the State of Michigan runs, same program we purchase our road salt through. And so it's -- we used the supplier that the state had awarded a contract to, and since we're a participant in that program, we're eligible to use those contract prices as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Fordice. So are there any questions for our DPW Director? Mr. Girbaugh?
Just curious, when you said reliability and operational problems, it's just with the dump and the hoist and that stuff, or is the engine itself?
Yeah, the engine, transmission, the chassis, you know, they've all received maintenance over the years, but work just fine.
Good, good.
Additional questions? Any discussion? No, but it's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Roth, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to New Business Item 14-98. This is the purchase of zero-turn mowers. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated April 25, 2014, from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the purchase of two 72-inch SCAG zero-turn mowers from Countryside Lawn and Garden Equipment of Ann Arbor in the amount of $28,386. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Seibokanig. Mr. Fordice, do you care to comment at all?
Certainly. Again, another budgeted purchase. We had originally budgeted for a small mower and a large mower to -- the small mower was an additional unit to help with cemetery operations. It's continuing to get very crowded down there, as we have more and more burials, more stones installed. So maneuverability was an issue with our current fleet. As we dug into things again, found an opportunity to make things a little better all around. The wastewater treatment plant had a smaller mower that was not seeing a tremendous amount of use, so we're going to move that to the cemetery and move our best 72-inch to the wastewater plant, and then purchase these two for parks and road sides. So we looked at My Deal pricing, and we also requested quotes from two other local dealers. And in this case, we're recommending purchasing not the low bidder. We currently have X-Marks. Those are the ones that are available through the My Deal program, and we've gotten good use out of them. They've been reliable units, but would like to purchase the SCAG units, because the one part of the X-Marks that we have had problems with was their drive belts and the deck spindle. And on the SCAG, it has a drive shaft rather than a belt, and it has a serviceable spindle. The former ones, once anything goes wrong with it, you have to replace the whole unit. On the SCAGs, you can replace parts of them. We anticipate that with just saving one servicing on those items, we'll have saved more than the difference in the cost.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Are there any questions for our DPW Director? Pretty cut and dry. Any discussion? No? It's been properly moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Councilwoman Seibokanig, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to New Business Item 14-99. This is a purchase, excuse me, of asphalt mill and planer. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated April 25, 2014, from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the purchase of an 18-inch asphalt mill planer from Dibley Equipment of Ann Arbor, Michigan, in the amount of $12,156.20.
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roth. Mr. Fordice, do you care to comment at all?
Certainly. Another piece of equipment, an attachment to our existing Bobcat skid steer loader. We tested one of these units in the fall. What this allows us to do is it's a very -- it's the same basic technology that we use when we're doing a mill and pave on a full-width street. They bring in a gigantic machine and grind off a layer of asphalt. This will allow us to do small strips of asphalt, so we can do another set of repairs. Frequently, you'll see a road that's in very good shape, except the last eight inches next to the curb are all cracked up, because we tend to get a lot of water infiltration and movement there. This will allow us to quickly and efficiently go through and mill off that surface and patch in a new surface. Similarly, at the pavement joint between two lanes, because of compaction difficulty there, you frequently get deterioration there. We can just mill that strip out of there, put down new asphalt in that spot, and extend the useful life of the roadways.
Excellent.
Again, purchasing this went through the My Deal contract.
Any -- Mr. Burgoyne?
When new asphalt is put down, you have a very heavy roller that finishes that hot asphalt. Do we have some type of roller?
We do, actually, yeah. It hasn't seen much use in recent years, but yeah, we have a sufficient roller for that.
Also, sometimes if there's a water main break or something, there's a rough spot that remains in the fill-in. Could this make that nicer?
This will certainly -- this will improve our ability to touch up areas like that. You know, those repairs are frequently done under non-ideal conditions, and certainly there's a couple of them that were done over the winter that are filled with cold patch, so those do need to be excavated out and filled in with a proper hot patch when that material's available. And this machine will allow us to kind of -- we can smooth out the edges. In addition to removing asphalt, we can also shape asphalt with this. So if we have -- if we end up with a hump in something, we can just go and grind off that hump.
Very good. Any follow-up questions, Mr. Burgoyne? Thank you, sir. Any additional questions for Mr. Fordice? And I hear no discussion, so we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Roth, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Move on to New Business Item 14-100. This is the purchase of a compact excavator. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated April 25, 2014, from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the purchase of -- purchase of, not if -- of a Bobcat E35 T4 compact excavator from Dibley Equipment of Ann Arbor, Michigan, in the amount of $51,513.70.
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Burgoyne. Again, Mr. Fordice, do you care to comment?
This unit will replace our 1981 Ford backhoe. Again, another piece of equipment that's been on the replacement schedule and pushed back a few times. We do have another backhoe loader, but having two excavating machines is, I think, essential for our, what I would call, operational readiness to be able to deal with water main breaks. And a benefit of, an extra benefit of this and why we're going with a compact rather than a full-scale loader backhoe is, again, the cemetery. We, it's becoming more and more difficult to get our backhoe in there. We frequently have to remove headstones in order to dig a new grave. This unit will fit between the rows very easily and it has a near-zero turn on its back, so it can turn within a matter of inches within its own track base. So it's very easy to operate in those tight conditions. It also has the capability of digging directly next to its own track, so you can, you can dig up against a vertical wall right directly below it. It's got a lot of maneuverability. We do lose the ability to load salt into our dump trucks with this unit and we also have the disadvantage that this has to be trailered to the site. I mean, well, it could be driven, but it would take a very long time. So, again, utilizing the My Deal contract.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Fordice? Mr. Roth?
Will we be keeping our old truck, our old piece of equipment, backhoe?
No, no, we will sell that.
Okay.
Additional questions? Any discussion? No, then it's been properly moved by Tihar, seconded by Burgoyne to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business item 14-001, or, excuse me, 101. This is the purchase of a four-by-four pickup with snowplow and liftgate. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated May the 7, 2014, from DPW Director Fordice and to approve or not to approve the purchase of a 2015 Ford F250 with snowplow and liftgate from Signature Ford of Owasso, Michigan, in the amount of Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Mr. Fordice, do you care to comment?
Continuing on the theme of catching up on purchases that have been pushed off for a little while, historically, we've replaced our pickup trucks after 12 years of service that for us has worked out to be the kind of a good average of end of useful life and when the repairs really start piling up. So we currently have two trucks in the fleet that are older than 12 years. This would replace one of them and allow us to continue our snow clearing ways.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Fordice? Mr. Roth?
This follows up with the same kind of a question you're gonna, what are you gonna do with the old one?
The old unit will be auctioned.
Okay.
Mr. Gearbaugh, did you have a question?
There's just not a local company that bids on this stuff?
We solicited bids from Briarwood, Gene Butman, Varsity Signature, and another one that does a lot of My Deal work. I can't recall the name right now. So, yeah, we solicited bids from five.
And this is the only one that responded?
Yes.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Any discussion? No, well, then it's been properly moved by Councilmember Gearbaugh, seconded by Councilmember Roth to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business item 14-102. This is the purchase of an asphalt hot box trailer. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated April the 25, 2014, from DPW Director Fordice and to approve or not to approve the purchase of a four-ton asphalt hot box trailer from Falcon Road Maintenance Equipment of Midland, Michigan, in the amount of $21,202.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protam Tihar. Bless you, Mr. Campell. Mr. Fordice, do you care to comment at all?
Certainly. Another piece of equipment to aid with our road maintenance and repair efforts. This one has kind of multiple purposes. One of them, it'll make us, it'll make the pothole patching process safer and quicker. It'll allow us to put a larger load into the trailer, keep it at a workable temperature. It'll also improve health and safety for our workers because our current equipment that we use, you have to shovel up at this height and also you have the exhaust of the truck rerouted to this height to try to help keep the material warm. This, this new trailer has an ergonomically appropriate shovel height and it also has a dump feature which can, will move the material back to the shoveling apron and it'll keep it warm and workable without exhaust in your face. And it will also allow us to do larger asphalt patches in the summertime. Right now, we're limited to the amount of material that we can get from the supplier, get to the site, and get placed and compacted before it cools down. Now we can get a larger load, so we'll make fewer trips to the asphalt plant and be able to repair a larger area in one dump.
There are questions for DPW Director Fordice? Mr. Burgoyne?
What is the method of heating?
In this?
Yes.
It's a diesel heater.
Additional questions? Comments?
Just, I think we need to prove this to go along with our scraper or our milling machine, but I'm looking forward to this stuff working and hopefully we'll be able to address some of the problems that we had this winter quickly.
That is the idea.
I would guess to expand on Mr. Gearbaugh's comments, it's, as I reflect back on almost six years on council, it's refreshing to have the ability to invest in these types of capital purchases.
Yes.
Or capital equipment, rather. As I said at the work meeting, Mr. Fordice, and for those of you in the audience who were, who are in attendance, we hear a lot from the people we represent about investing and maintaining our infrastructure. Well, that position is not believable if you're not spending money on a routine basis on the type of maintenance projects that we're dealing with this evening. So I think these investments, and they are investments, very strategic investments, coupled with the fact that we're going to be adding two new individuals on payroll at DPW is a step in the right direction and signifies, I think, to the public that this council and the city do believe very strongly in maintaining our infrastructure and also investing in some of our properties. You mentioned that numerous pieces of equipment that have been authorized and approved this evening will be utilized at the cemetery. Obviously, that's something that is not controversial, but people take very seriously because their loved ones are interned there and we take great pride in maintaining that parcel. So I think these are all good things and I didn't mean to razz you too much for filling my agenda with bump team motions. It's all, it's all, like I said, steps in the right direction.
This has gone almost as quick as my budget presentation.
Yeah, not quite. Are there any additional comments?
No, then it's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Tihar to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. All right, Mr. Fordice, you're off the hook until the last discussion item.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We move on now to new business item 14-0, excuse me, 14-103, Celtic Festival Agreement. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 2, 2014 memo from Treasurer Bennett and to approve and adopt or not approve the proposed agreement between the City of Saline and the Friends of the Festival. Is there a motion?
I'd like to move to acknowledge receipt.
Start with acknowledging receipt, okay? Mayor Protam Tihar has moved to acknowledge receipt and that was seconded by Mr. Burgoyne. Ms. Bennett, do you care to come forward and discuss your memo dated May the 2?
Since Jeff won't, sure. As you may recall, we were discussing last year when we presented, when the, when the Celtic Festival did its final presentation to you for the 2013 financial condition of that festival. We discussed at that time that since they had filed their 501(c)(3) and had become and received their own tax identification number, that the city would have to make arrangements with them to start recording their revenues and expenditures under that tax ID number. I've been working with the treasurer from the Celtic Festival and they have drafted accounting procedures so that we will fund their Friends account so that everything is reported under that tax ID number appropriately. So basically, this agreement spells out that the expenses and revenues will be still coming into the City of Saline. I will still be in, you know, making those deposits and issuing those checks, but that will be done separate from our general fund and will be included and reported under the Celtic, Friends of the Celtic 501(c)(3) tax identification number. And all the reports and we will make payments to that account as needed and then at the end of their festival, they'll have, I think it says 60 days for them to repay the amount that we fronted them, whatever, you know, like, whatever that amount would be that they needed for that year to pay us back. If after the 60 days, for some reason, they didn't have their financial stuff available yet or that there was, God forbid, the event of a rain or something like that, then the council would, the contract allows for interest at the current market prime to be charged, but the council also, it also allows for the council to waive that and make terms going forward. Basically, what this will mean for the City of Saline's general fund is that there would be a advance or receivable out to the Celtic Festival and that we would come back in and ideally that would be in, in, and out every year. And this has been recommended and approved by our auditors.
Are there questions for Treasurer Bennett? Mr. Burgoyne, do you have a question?
Friends of the schools and Friends of the Fire Department do not run the school funds through the Friends of the schools and the Fire Department does not run the Fire Department funds through the Friends of the Fire Department. It doesn't, and the Celtic Festival Committee to me is part of the city. It's a city agency. Fine that there's a 501(c)(3) Friends out there to help now and then, but I, I don't see how this makes sense. That's, I guess that's a question.
The additional, actually, I'm looking more for questions at the moment.
That was a question. How does this make sense?
I guess my question would be, yeah, why are we organizing this out if we're gonna do it separate? Why we just didn't completely take it out of our books and we just give them money or contribution?
We are. That's exactly what we're doing.
But I mean, completely, it's all underneath them, but you're still gonna be collecting money and paying bills and things like that, so we're still providing the service, yet they're out in, but we're reporting underneath their 501(c)(3).
I'm not doing any reporting for them. All the reporting will be done by their treasurer. I am basically doing what we've been doing in the past is cutting a check like I do for the Economic Development, LDFA, TIFA, and like Carol Chapman from our Fire Department does for the Fire Board, all different tax identity numbers, all different separate checking accounts. It's just basically using a separate checking account. I am not an authorized signer on those accounts. No one on the city would be an authorized signer. It would all strictly be the Friends and the Friends is responsible for all of the reporting mechanisms. The accounting is being handled in-house only because at this point, the Friends of the Festival is a volunteer organization. And until such time when they can afford not only to rebuild their, you know, to have the event money and then start affording a staff person to, and the software, the software's in place, the check stock, you know, all I'd have to do is print up the check stock to match our printer and the software and everything is already, we have that in-house, so that's why we're loaning the service to them until they can get on their feet, which eventually, when that, when that happens, then they will be completely done from the City of Saline.
And we've had legal review of this by our attorneys?
Our, our legal counsel drafted the agreement.
Legal, and then when you said Plant Moran's also looked at and recommended?
Yes, Dickerson and Wright drafted the agreement upon Plant Moran's suggestion. Plant Moran would like to see minimal transactions in our books for this event because it gets so cumbersome, they want minimal transactions. That's why the two payments or the one payment, there'd be a loan on the book and then it would be coming back in to clearly distinguish that.
So if we establish this this year, next year, we could possibly move it to a point where we're all giving them as just a donation so that they can move it off completely into their situation, just like how Main Street's set up. That's kind of where I want to go to.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is the first transition step to getting to that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's a step, I think, Mr. Gearbaugh, and I think you and I are in total agreement on this, it's creating parity with all these community events, that the same type of support that we give to the Celtic Festival should mirror what we give to Harvest of the Arts and mirror what we give to Summerfest.
Yeah, I'm just a little nervous about us still doing some of the accounting and collecting and stuff like that.
But it's not being, I'm not making the deposits and I'm not making the withdrawals. I'm preparing that and the Friends are still signing the checks and making the deposits.
So you'll be doing no reporting on our side?
I'll be doing no reporting on this at all.
Okay.
Ms. Sebo Koenig, excuse me?
Just to pony onto that, with respect to what you said about no reporting, that isn't exactly what I'm reading and maybe I'm misreading this under the terms and conditions, because the E states provide reports on transactions. This is what the City Treasurer's Office will do. Prepare checks, prepare the check register, receive and deposit checks, report, and provide reports.
I'm not doing, I'm not doing their annual reports, I'm not doing their 1099s and I'm not filing any statements on their behalf of their financial condition. Or we are not providing an audit. What I'm doing is printing the check register and giving it to them.
Okay.
That's my reporting.
Okay. And so the time that the Treasurer's Office spends on this, is that captured for, so that the festival can sort of get an idea of what true expenses are as far as, you know, how much time goes into this?
It would be going from this point on, yes. It would be because it would be part of the cost that the city addresses annually in their event request.
Do we have a couple other questions? Is that okay?
Please.
Okay. Under three, under the term, I just, I have some concerns. It's a little ambiguous. It's a lot ambiguous, actually, because what it states is until the Friends of the Festival has sufficient resources to perform its own accounting, but it doesn't exactly say what that expectation is. Like, is there a number? Is there a goal for funds?
I think the goal, the goal is that they would not have, so the last, and then the last year, the Celtic Festival not only paid for the festival, they actually made a profit and then that profit went into the Friends account. They don't have enough upfront to cover the upfront cost. That's, and so after the event, because all their money really is raised the day of the event or a majority of it, after the event, then they can pay that back.
Right.
So the goal is, once they have enough money in there so that they don't need some upfront cash, basically all we're doing is upfronting them the cash.
Okay, I understand that, but how much is enough cash? There's no?
Their budgeted amount. And in our budget amount for this year, for this festival, $73,000.
And it does, it's sort of, it just leaves it wide open for, like, how long? It says, it's expected to be within three years, but it could be five or six years, it could be, it's very ambiguous to me, I'm not.
Well, that would be, that would be a policy decision, Ms. Sebo Koenig, that would have to be made by the City Council. I mean, in theory, next year, regardless of how successful or unsuccessful the festival is, this council could determine that we are not going to upfront them any financial amount.
Thank you.
I wouldn't recommend that, but. Are there additional questions, Mr. Burgoyne?
Ms. Bennett, you said that in this past year, there was a profit made and that money went into the Friends account, the additional money. Did the city send that money into the Friends account?
No, sir.
Okay. So it didn't go that way. They, they got donations or somehow did some fundraising directly, right?
The way, they, right, and because they collect all the money and they also did the PayPal and they set all of that, the fun, you know, anything that did online, they set that up to go into that account because they had the authority to authorize transactions in and out of that account. So, and they also had to, had the sponsor for the beer tent, which was totally separate from our city funding. And so those proceeds all went to their account and then at the end, when we reconciled, we said, this is how much we spent. They issued us a check back and they kept the balance.
Please.
So we have other city operations, for example, farmer's market. Now, farmer's market, how complicated a legal procedure do we have with them in terms of contracting and so forth? How are those funds used and kept and so forth? Just comparing the farmer's market, for example. We have other ones. We have, there's, there's another account in the Police Department and?
Just totally separate. The account, the cadet account is completely separate from the general fund books, similar to the way I'm proposing for the Friends. The summer, the farmer's market is much less significant than this and the funds are deposited into the Economic Development Fund and the expenses are recorded and paid through the Economic Development, which is another city account separate from our general fund.
Okay, so the farmer's market is? Okay, so, the farmer's market is a city activity that has costs and has receipts?
Yes.
I'm, I'm not su, I'm, I'm, I think there's a lot of stuff coming at us, and I'm kind of uncomfortable in trying to process this too quickly.
Okay.
And I...
Why don't we do this, Mr. Burgoyne? Since, I believe the mover of this motion was Mayor Protem Tahar, and you were the second, I do have a, actually, the mover split the articulated motion in half, so right now, all we're entertaining is a motion to acknowledge receipt of Ms. Bennett's May 2nd, 2014 memo. So unless there are additional questions, Mr. Girbaugh.
Just one other question. In terms of, you know, we advanced the money to them and everything, are we, have any requirements of bonding of the individuals or anything? Like, it mentions in here about, you know, potentially, if there's misappropriation or whatever, so, should that happen, we're out the seventy thousand dollars?
That, that's in the conditions, that, the money in the Friends' account, the purpose of that is that any, that our obligation, any obligations to the festival is made before any of that money is dispersed, in the event of embezzlement or anything like that, the contract does, or does allow us to pursue and collect, and vice versa.
Right. Now, it just goes to say how much?
That's why, that's exactly why we wanted to do it in small amount, and do it, not just give them the full amount, give it to them, and then, you know, as they need it. And they're not gonna request the full amount that they may need, because they're gonna use their monies that they have there.
Yeah, I'd like, request it based on a cash flow, you know, projection and everything else, and not necessarily the full amount that they need. They should have cash coming in at some point in time, and not necessarily, I understand what you're talking about, but I'm more concerned about where our cash is, and how much is advanced, and who's actually responsible for it.
Well, and as Plant Moran pointed it out to me, it's, you know, it's a, it's a loan, it's an advance, it's, you are, we are taking that chance to do that, but we're also taking that chance when we pay all these costs out of our, out of our general fund, and then we have a rainout.
Right.
And the money does not come back at that point either.
Right, in that situation, though, we've covered it through our liability and everything else, there's not two people handling different things, and things can happen, that's just...
But they do have checks and balances, and they are required, and they have turned in their accounting procedures and their, and their checks and balances that they have to have in place. They have to have that in place with us, and those people do have to also be insured and bonded.
Okay, that's more the question I wanted on that one.
But that's not required by us, we're not, we're not paying for that, but the Friends have to make sure that those people are, I mean, I would suggest that they would, because that organization will be held liable.
Right, right, and that's where I wanted to know where that coverage was, and so if that's in there, that's another security measure for this type of agreement.
I mean, the whole entire board would have to go away with all of the money.
But that's been the concern, that when we tried to move this organization off to more of a 501(c)(3), no one wanted to necessarily be held responsible for that potential thing that could happen if there was a rainout or anything like that, so I wanted to make sure that, however this agreement occurs, there's surety and bondage on their side, so that if something did happen, they'll be able to resolve that.
I will verify that with Scott and Nick at Wright, at the Attorney's Office, but I was assured, that was my biggest question, too, and they said that that would not be a cost to the City of Celine, and that the, you know, the Friends would make sure that they had those checks and balances in place, so.
Okay, nope, nope, that's fine, great.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Mr. Burgoyne, you had an additional question?
Well, it's more of a comment.
Okay.
I have a concern that we're taking something simple and making it complicated. And, simple things are less costly, and more complicated things are most, more costly, not only in a dollar point of view, but we're making this Celtic Festival us versus them. And I would rather have my arms open and keep the Celtic Festival with us, the way we do with Sister City, exchanges, and whatever else is part of our community, part and parcel of our community, keep them being part of us, rather than off to the side.
Well, I can tell you, one second, Mr. Roth, I can tell you, because, well, as, as most of you know, I'm the council liaison to the Celtic Festival Executive Committee, I can tell you that, that Mickey Joe has done an outstanding job communicating and keeping the committee abreast to this, this, this policy during the development process, and unless she objects or disagrees, in all of those meetings, in all of those conversations that I was privy to, I didn't observe any animosity, any hostility, or any belief amongst the members that it was the city versus the festival. Quite the contrary, I felt that the committee certainly understood where we were coming from, and for the most part, was very sympathetic and supportive to, to the policy changes. I understand that we may have a bit of a philosophical difference, and that there are those who probably would like to see the city support the Celtic Festival in the way we have been supporting the, the festival in perpetuity. That is a completely reasonable position, I just happen to disagree. And my approach, which has been articulated on numerous occasions, is to create parity between this event and the other community events, where they are separate, they're independent, they're autonomous, they control their own destiny, but they do receive support and encouragement from the City of Celine, and so, I'm supportive of this policy, because I think it's a step in that direction. However, Mr. Burgoyne, to your previous point, and to Mr. Girbaugh's question, which Mickey Joe, excuse me, Treasurer Bennett said she would connect with Scott and Nick from Dickinson Wright and get an answer to, I'm happy to entertain and, and ask for a vote, hopefully, in just a moment, on the motion on the floor to acknowledge receipt, and then if council would like more time to, to think about this policy, more time to ask questions and have a comeback as an action item at our next meeting on May the 19th, I'm certainly fine with that. Mr. Burgoyne?
Well, I do not agree with your statement that the Celtic Festival has cash, cash costs to the city beyond what other groups have. They have general support by waiving fees and DPW assistance and so forth, the way other events have, but I have not seen a, a negative flow of dollars going to the Celtic, I thought it was pretty even. In terms of in-kind support or so forth, or waiving fees, yes, I, I agree with that, but I, I don't know if you meant to state that, because I, I don't see dollars.
Well, I, I don't recall saying anything about dollars. What I, what I observe as the distinction between this event and other events, like Summerfest, like Harvest of the Arts, is that those are independent entities that, that control their own destiny, and more importantly, they are not underwritten in the same fashion that the Celtic Festival has been historically. Now, the Celtic Festival Committee and volunteers have produced some exceptional events in recent years, and it has not been a financial drain on the city, in fact, as Mickey Joe has stated, and you've seen the financials, it's actually made money, so we're, they're headed in the right direction, it's just, again, Mr. Burgoyne, I think we have a philosophical difference, and that's okay.
No, I think it's factual, I think you just said again, that historically, the Celtic has been a cash drain on the city, and I dispute that. That is not true and factual. It's not, it's just not true. What, what has happened is that they have had support, in-kind support, and some waiving of fees and so forth, they've gone up and down as to what they've made from year to year, but they've been pretty even over the long time, that, that, at first, they had excess money, then it dipped, and so forth, but they've remained pretty even. We have not shelled out dollars to them, not net.
Well, I, I think you're, I don't think we are really disagreeing.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I concede that point, and if you misunderstood me, I, I apologize.
No problem.
The, the, the system and format of this event and other events is different, in the sense that we underwrite this event, and I personally, and you may disagree, and that, that's perfectly reasonable, would like to go in a new direction and create more autonomy and parity between this event and some of its counterparts. Mr. Roth, did you have a question or comment, sir?
Yes, I want to thank Mickey Joe for her efforts. I agree with your statement. I've been asking for years, many, many years, even when I was on the Celtic Festival Committee, to get a true financial report that I could understand. I think in this method here, with the 501(c)(3) and the proper reporting, I would be able to understand right where we're at, because fifteen years ago, I didn't know whether we'd made money or not made money, kinda seemed to be kinda a wishy-washy works, not accusing anybody of any bad doings and so on, it was just, we're gonna make it gold. And this puts it where it needs to be, that they're definitely following a procedure, accounting procedure, one that's understandable. It's not putting one group against another group, it's just doing the right way of doing business, and I commend this procedure for doing such.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Okay, we're gonna proceed to vote on the motion to acknowledge receipt, and then unless there's objection, Ms. Bennett will get clarification to Mr. Girbaugh's question, and then additionally, if people have additional thoughts or concerns, they are encouraged to relay those to staff, but this will come back as an action item at our subsequent meeting on May the 19th. So again, it's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Burgoyne, to acknowledge receipt of the May 2nd memo from Treasurer Bennett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to do, the discussion portion of our agenda, Ms. Bennett, thank you very much. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda this evening, we begin with Commission, Committee, or Task Force reports from City Council members. Mr. Girbaugh?
HDC is producing a flyer that was sent out either last week or this week, that will be giving notification to all of the historic district properties and residences, that we're intending to put the signs out in their yard, but also giving an idea of our new website and everything, so that those owners will understand that they're part of the district, and so that kind of communication, we're hoping to do that, and then put something in place, so that as the properties turn over, new individuals move in, that they'll be put into a, a list, and then we'll also receive additional information, so we're hoping to try and keep more communication going, because we've had some recent issues, again, that have arisen, and hopefully, we can prevent those more prospectively in the future.
Very good. I actually saw a draft of that brochure, Mr. Girbaugh, so I don't know if it was a collaborative effort on behalf of the, the Commissioner, or if one individual took the lead on it, but it's an excellent resource, so I commend you all for, for developing that. The other thing that I'd like to mention, since you brought up HDC, and since the staff liaison is here, it's been bothering me for weeks, the historic district sign, and they are beautiful signs, as you enter the Ann Arbor Street Historic District, and you are southbound on Ann Arbor Street, that pole, the black paint has chipped away significantly. And again, those historic district signs, which actually, we installed when I was the Historic District Commissioner, going on eight years ago, those are very, very nice signs, they're important resources in the community, and they should look nice. So, I just wanted to bring that to, to your attention, hopefully, it can be rectified soon. Yes, sir?
And I forgot, and the task force met again this last week, and we will be bringing, for LDFA, Tifa, and EDC, will be bringing recommendations forward to the board at our next meeting, which is next Tuesday, or another week, next Tuesday, I believe it is.
Very good. Are there any other Commission, Committee, or Task Force reports? Ms. Tahar?
Yes, thank you. Arts and Culture Committee met today. The, the process for moving the Orange Risen Bust Outdoors is moving forward, as well as collaboration with Historic District, no, with the Historical Society, to install an antique course trough downtown. And the other thing, which took up a lot of our time today, was talking about setting goals, which is a process we've never exactly formally gone through in my time on this, on this committee, so I think it'll be very helpful for the rest of our work for the year.
Very good, thank you. Any other Commission, Committee, or Task Force reports? I have one, it's more of an, an event announcement, but it's being coordinated and hosted, in part by the Celine Addiction Prevention Task Force and Celine Area Schools. Following the Board of Education meeting tomorrow evening, the School Board, Celine Area Schools, and again, the Celine Addiction Prevention Task Force, will be hosting David Cook, who is an author and inspirational speaker, who will be telling his story about his son's struggle with addiction, and Mr. Cook will also share with us a story about his 100 Petals campaign, and the impact he is having in supporting families whose loved ones are struggling with addiction, or who are at risk. And again, that's tomorrow evening, immediately following the School Board meeting at the Liberty School Media Center at 7:00 PM, and so, I would strongly encourage you to attend if you are available and able, and if you'd like to disseminate and share that on Facebook, social media, that would be encouraged as well. So again, that's tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM at the Liberty School Media Center. If there are no additional Commission, Committee, or Task Force reports, are there reports and other announcements? We'll start with Ms. Tahar, and then go down to Mr. Burgoyne.
I, I would like, pleased to report, twenty-eight plus four visitors from Celine have just recently returned from a visit to our sister city, Lindenberg, Germany. The group was there, hosted for ten days, and part of, as part of the time we were there, we, there was a celebration that the city put on for the 10th anniversary of the signing in Lindenberg of the Sister City Agreement. That was a great evening, we got to see not only our hosts, but city officials and former, former members of the Friendship Committee. We also had the opportunity during this visit to express our appreciation and gratitude to now former mayor, Se, of Lindenberg. He, there was recently an election, mayoral election in Lindenberg, and Lindenberg has, as of May the 1st, a new mayor, whom we also met, and he's very interested in the Sister City relationship, and is hoping to visit Celine the next time a group comes from Lindenberg, which we expect will be either 2015 or 2017.
Excellent, thank you. Appreciate you serving in an official capacity there as well, I'm sure you did an outstanding job.
I should also add, there, there are a couple of gifts to the city, which, in my semi-jet-lagged state, I didn't feel capable of carrying over tonight, so I'll be bringing them at our next meeting next week.
That'd be great, terrific. Mr. Burgoyne?
Actually, somebody else on the panel here may, may know more about this than I do, but I saw something, oh, actually, Terry would know all about it, saw something about the Chamber of Commerce looking at parking in terms of two things. For years, I've been saying the numbering system is not, is something you can't remember, no, the public just can't remember. And so, I, I saw a blurb somewhere about the Chamber looking at, at that aspect of it, perhaps doing something else instead of a, a number system for the parking. And the other item I saw the Chamber was looking at was, in terms of signage that would guide people to, to be able to know that there's free parking in, in the area. And I, I've been talking about needing more signs, I wholly support that. I noticed that in some other communities, and in Ann Arbor, in some areas, there are the international signs, which are blue, that say P, just says P, and people understand what that, that is, it's parking, you know? So, to me, I don't think it would be out of place, and I would be very supportive to hear what, whatever the Chamber is looking at on, on this issue. I, I'd like to see, like, ten or twelve parking signs, just directing everybody in every possible way to our parking, rather than the fancy signs that are fairly expensive, fancy signs we have, saying what each parking lot is and so forth. Simplicity, just having almost thirty thousand vehicles pass by is actually an opportunity, if they, they know they can make a quick stop and, and go. So I'm, it's just the parking issue, I, I don't know if anybody else has heard about it.
Terry, do you have any update on that front?
I, well...
I can bring up some, too, actually, that's one of the recommendations in the task force from the LDFA.
It is, and I was just gonna say that I believe Art Director is working...
That's coming, Art was there, and so, we've all discussed it, so it's gonna come up as one of the concerns in that issue.
Okay, I didn't see it from the task... Okay, I didn't see it from the task force, I...
That's probably what we read from that, from the chamber, but...
The executive director of the chamber, and then of course, the immediate past president of the chamber bore members of the task force.
That's where the link is.
Okay.
Very good. So information on that will be forthcoming, Mr. Girbaugh.
Yes.
We'll expect to hear that from you then. Excellent, okay. Are there any other reports or announcements? Do you want to talk right now about the work group?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real briefly, after conversations with Mayor Morrow, referenced funding for parks as well as pathways throughout the city, trying to kind of use a collective effort, if you will. Like to designate a city manager's work group, which would consist of a council member, and I believe the mayor talked to Mr. Rhodes, Alana Hess, who's the Parks Commission Chair, as well as city staff to serve on that, to investigate and come up with possible grant sources for the proposed and existing parks and pathways in the city, as well as potentially connector pathways to other parts of the county, if you will. So that's kind of in a nutshell, I believe.
Yep. The other thing that I would add, so in addition to Alana Hess, who's the chair of the Parks Commission, Ms. Scruggs, Mr. Fordice, yourself, council member Rhodes, former council member and current Parks Commissioner, Jim Peters also volunteered to serve. And so this issue sort of came up organically from conversations I had with Mr. Peters and with council member Rhodes, as well as conversations I've had with DPW Director Fordice. I don't know if anyone else here attended the Washtenaw County Park presentation that they had at the Celine District Library. Jeff, would that have been a month or so ago now, a couple of weeks?
Less than that.
Less than that. Lee, I think actually Sheila, your wife, who's also Parks Commissioner, attended. And one of the things that I think the participants of that town hall learned, which I have known for some time, is that if you look at a map of Washtenaw County, and you see where the county has a presence, the one area that they are clearly deficient is in Celine. In addition to not having a physical presence, I think that from a policy perspective, we have not accessed the kind of financial resources that they have available for parks and for recreation initiatives. And evidently, that's one county fund that has a pretty sizable and healthy fund balance. So there is a grant application process that is currently underway, I believe grants are due, grant applications are due October 1st, is that correct, Ms. Scruggs, ballpark? Okay. And so one of the things that I'm, that Mr. Campbell and I talked about with Director Scruggs and Director Fordice, is convening a work group that would take a very holistic approach, look at our existing inventory, but also look at future opportunities, and apply for funding through various entities, but specifically Washtenaw County Parks. So, Mr. Burgoyne?
To add to that, I, Mr. Peters had some follow-up information that I heard about, which is that the county staff will actually assist you in applying to the county for county funds.
Right.
And so that's a good resource.
That's an excellent resource.
And you really should take...
And again, one that we haven't leveraged as much in the past.
We had, we had done it for the library trail.
Right.
And we asked them for fifty-seven thousand, and they decided to give us sixty thousand on our fifty thousand request.
Right.
So, they have money.
And that's the kind of project that appeals to them, where it's multiple entities participating and contributing. So again, I think it's a resource that we need to leverage, and unless there are objections, the city manager will proceed with the establishment of the work group. Mr. Burgoyne?
One other thing on this, which is that we have a non-motorized plan.
Right.
And we have the Parks Plan and so forth, which shows our connection to other communities and the county.
Yep.
And because we have that as a base, that really helps us for them, it helps the county to help us.
Right, absolutely. Mr. Girbaugh?
I agree, and I've been actually trying to communicate more often with our representative on the commission, Washtenaw County Commission, Ms. Ping, in hopes that they'll be moving more funds towards us, but I think this more formalized approach, going for grants and such, will put that on the burner, and so that we can actually put a little more spotlight on what we need and would like to have. We should be getting more of our share of revenue, we contribute quite a bit, and we're not seeing the same return.
The other thing I think that we all need to just sort of keep on our radar in the future, when vacancies and positions become available, I think it's really key in this community's strategic interest to make sure that there's somebody who's active and embedded in the Celine community, who serves on the Washtenaw County Parks Commission. It's not accidental that the projects that you see that have been developed throughout the county are often related to the presence of one or more voting members on that commission. So I think that's also something we just need to be cognizant of. Okay, very good, I think you have direction, Mr. Campbell, unless I, I'm not hearing any objections. Okay, very good. Are there any other reports or announcements? No? Okay, then we move on to SP, Celine Police Department, excuse me, reporting to council. I think Mr. Campbell addressed this in his weekly communique, but I have asked staff, specifically Mr. Campbell and Chief Renick, to evaluate, analyze, and understand what some of our neighboring municipalities do as it relates to reporting pertinent information to city council. When I say pertinent information, I'm defining that as crimes and activities of a pretty profound nature. And when I talk about reporting, doing it in a timely way, so that council members are not blindsided by media reports or the rumor mill. And we have something sort of informal in process, but I think there's great value in formalizing that and giving a little bit more structure. So Chief, I don't know if you care to comment at this time?
If I could.
Oh, absolutely, I'm sorry.
If I could kick off first. And Chief and I have had discussions, and you know, first and foremost, I guess I want to preface by saying, I don't, I personally don't, I don't see an issue with getting the information. Sometimes things inadvertently, maybe an officer, for instance, maybe they don't, they think it's maybe general information, or maybe somebody misses a day, they're on vacation, whatever, there's all sorts of reasons. But for the most part, I think Police Department Chief does a very good job of passing along information that is more than just the mundane, the things that council, you know, we want you to have a heads up on, for instance. But there are, there will be, I mean, there will be times when inadvertently that information doesn't get there as timely as we'd like, and so we certainly apologize for that, and we certainly don't intend for that, but unfortunately, sometimes it does happen. But Chief?
Yeah, I try to keep the city manager certainly very informed when something that I feel would be of interest to him and/or the city council, and get that information to him quickly, because I know that he will text that information to the city council, so you aren't blindsided, and we try to do that. I surveyed several other police departments through our lists, through the Chiefs Association, asking this exact same question about what they did with their city council and mayor and city manager, to find out if there's something that they have in writing, and in fact, every one of them responded that they do not have anything in writing that addresses this. And they said they basically go by the rule of thumb, that if it's something that you think that the city council should know, or something that you think the city manager should know, you know, text it to them, or give them a phone call, and let them know. Realizing that there certainly may be the incident or two that you might get blindsided by, and you know, that's one of those ones that you just, you know, you're sad that it happens, that in fact, you can't answer that question. But I think, I know of a recent event that just happened here, actually started as a rumor, and I think it was the rumor that got, that got out of hand, rather than what actually occurred. And, and so I don't know how you would, even if we put this in writing, I don't know that it would have, would have taken care of what happened just recently. It's unfortunate that it happens, but you know, rumors happen, and we can blame the news for that. Actually, it wasn't the news's fault, but it was actually a newspaper that called and said, well, is this true? And in fact, it wasn't true, but I think by that time, it got out that it was true. And so it was kind of like putting a fire out after it already occurred, when in fact, the fire never should have been started. But I do my best to let the city manager know what's going on. I have a guideline for my officers and supervisors, that if something happens, that they think would be newsworthy, that I'm text, and that they let me know, and then we just try to keep you as informed as possible, realizing that there certainly may be a time or two where it doesn't happen. And at that point, I guess all we can do is talk about it, and see that it tries, that doesn't happen again.
Let me first say that I completely agree with the city manager, and as I reflect back on my tenure on city council, for the most part, when there was a profound incident or a pretty serious criminal activity or crime committed, staff, whether that had been your predecessor, or one of his subordinates, or the city manager, has done a very good job in making sure that council was aware of it in a timely manner. So for the most part, I think what's done in-house is sufficient, I just want to make sure, as much as humanly possible, and we're never gonna be, you know, a hundred percent on this, or any other issue for that matter, but to get as close to that as possible, making sure that council members know when something, again, of a profound nature occurs, so that they have the facts, and they can respond to questions and inquiries, and also probably, perhaps most importantly, sort of dispel, dispel, excuse me, myths and rumors, which are obviously not healthy.
Right.
That's my perspective. Do anybody, does any member of council have additional questions or comments? Mr. Girbaugh?
I was just gonna say, my comment was that I'm more from the approach of looking at whatever potentially could be seen as harm to the city, or harm to any individual within the city. So for my approach, I'm more concerned of understanding, sooner than later, the information that potentially could put us in either a liable position, something that could potentially harm someone, or something that could potentially be seen as a problem for an employee or something to the level that it's significant. And I think we've had a couple of those incidences recently, and I think those are the issues where finding out about them in a public location, or a public, different than what we've heard from within our own shop, gets to be a bit concerning. And I know you've been on council for six years, but I was on council, you know, now this is my tenth year I'm completing, but I've been through a lot of different issues with different managers, and it's concerning when those kind of issues come up, and that we aren't able to address them and understand it before everything else hits the fan. And then I get concerned with not making sure that we're operating at the best of our abilities. I think this is a good approach going forward, and that where I look at it is really the significant liability issues that potentially could be seen as a problem for the city, that we are at least kept abrupt as soon as possible.
Disagreement with that, Mr. Girbaugh. Additional comments or questions? Okay. Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening. Anything further on this issue? No? Okay, then we move on to the mayor's exchange. I believe Todd has communicated about this in one of his weekly communiques, and I believe you also would have received a communication from our clerks department, but we are going to be conducting a city exchange with Whitehall, Michigan, which is north of Muskegon. They will be visiting us on May the 22nd, which is a week from this Thursday. Do we have a date finalized for when we are going to be visiting them?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay, but that will be forthcoming. We have a rough agenda, I think, prepared for the 22nd. It is not going to be as long of a visit as a community that is within close proximity. I think the commute is about two and a half, three hours. So to accommodate the drive, their visit is going to be relatively short, but they're gonna visit City Hall, we are gonna have lunch at Mont Giamo's, they're gonna take a driving tour and see some of our, well, some of the things that we're most proud of here in Celine. What else do I want to say about that? Do you have anything else you want to add?
I'll be sending out, well, I wanted you to look at the agenda before.
Okay, very good. And we welcome your participation. If you want to just come for lunch, that's fine, if you want to be with us for the entire day, I think that would be terrific as well. I should also note, and maybe Mr. Girbaugh, in fact, I think only Mr. Girbaugh, well, with the exception of Mr. Burgoyne, would have any experience with a city exchange. This is actually the first time one has been, a mayor's exchange, excuse me, has been conducted during my tenure on council. So I think the last one was in 2008, if I'm not mistaken. Did you have any mayor's exchanges when you were on council before?
Yeah, when the city was flush with money, we were able to do those type of things.
Right.
Those were pretty much one of the first things that went to the wayside after the recession hit. So if that's where we are now, at this point, that we can afford to do these again, that's up to the mayor.
Yeah, I think, well, I think they are important. I certainly do not believe it's something that needs to be done on an annual basis, but I think the fact that we haven't done one since 2008, I think that's probably a little bit too much of a lapse in time. And I think valuable insights can be gained through experiences like this. So again, you'll be receiving an email regarding the 22nd. We've also made up some very nice care packages, gift packages, for our guests, with things that are either donated, or things that we found in-house. And speaking of that, and I actually did not know that these existed, but if you want to pass those down, I think most everyone here has the large, traditional lapel pin that we've been passing out for a number of years, but these were down in storage, these are nicer, I think nicer, smaller lapel pins. I don't know, Mr. Girbaugh, Mr. Burgoyne, if you recognize them?
Yeah, they were given for five years' service.
Oh, okay, okay. So you are welcome to have one, if you don't have one already. And this is actually one of the small little things that's in the care package. Again, May 22nd, and you should be receiving an email from the clerks department. Ms. Tahar?
I have, yeah, just a question, of curiosity, why Whitehall? Or how are the cities chosen?
Well, let me talk to you a little bit about the process. So MML, in conjunction with the Michigan Association of Mayors, every year asks the various mayors of participating communities to fill out sort of an information form about yourself and about your community. And at the bottom, it asks, would you be interested in participating in a mayor's exchange in this coming year? And last year, I said that we were not interested, or that I was not interested. This year, I said I would be interested, if you could find a community who would be interested in partnering with us. So it's based, I think, in part on availability and interest, and probably a bit of random selection. And I received an email communication from a representative of MML probably about a month ago, and said that Whitehall would be interested in partnering with you, if you would be interested in partnering with them. And really, truly, the rest is history, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Additional comments or questions on that? Ms. Tybokanek?
I'm sorry, not on that.
Not on that?
Uh-uh.
Well, the last item up for discussion this evening is the People's Express contract. Mr. Fordice, maybe if you can come forward at this time. Initially, this was on the council agenda as an action item, but when I recalled our discussion at a previous work meeting, I thought it would be helpful maybe to discuss this once again before we took action on either renewing the contract, or moving in a different direction. And so, one, I wanted to note that I believe, excuse me, a week or so ago, you should have received a supplemental memo in your council mailbox from Mr. Fordice with a variety of pertinent information as it relates to People's Express. And again, it's my intention to bring this back as an action item at our next meeting, and I would be happy to entertain any questions or concerns that you may have, and I think Jeff would be happy to address those as well. Mr. Burgoyne?
One of the offerings was that People's Express has a grant, a three-year grant, for picking up people and taking them out of town in the Ann Arbor area. Well, I thought that was a very positive turn of events. I myself think that if that happens, then People's Express would be able to do a better job in town for people. And so it seems as though there's a very favorable turn of events, and we should take advantage of it. That's my view. It's, in comparing our choices, it's been a reasonable choice in the past, and it looks like it's becoming a better choice because of that free grant that they have for the out-of-towners.
I actually, I appreciate those comments, and I agree with them. I actually learned a little bit more about the grant, and Jeff, you can elaborate or correct me if I'm wrong, but following our meeting with the representative from People's Express, I had a subsequent meeting at AAATAs office, along with my counterpart from Pittsfield Township, Mandy Greewall, to discuss the urban core and... from Pittsfield Township, Mandy Greewall, to discuss the urban core and possibly expanding public transit to, to the Saline community and to Pittsfield Township. And of course, you all asked a number of good questions and asked for some data from the representatives from People's Express when they were here, met a work meeting probably a month and a half ago, two months ago, and that information is forthcoming. Actually, I'm trying to schedule them to come and present sometime in June. But evidently, to make a long story short, Mr. Burgoyne, what I found out about this grant that People's Express is going to be accessing to, to put an additional van or additional bus online, is that the grant actually comes from AAATAs. It's distributed through that entity. So, I, I think it's a, a good change. It's a step in the right direction. It allows for, you know, a van, a bus to be in this community during the entire duration that we pay for, while also allowing for additional van, bus to take people to important appointments at U of M Medical Center, at St. Joe, et cetera. The one thing that, that I'm going to be sort of a stickler on, because I like the flexibility, is instead of entering into multi-year contracts with People's Express, I would prefer a one-year contract. And they seemed amenable to that. I still believe, as I've stated in the past, that the future, and I don't know how soon, but the future, I think, is with the ride, if the goal is to increase the connectivity between the Saline community and the greater Ann Arbor area. And evidently, I think that service is only going to improve based on the vote that took place last Tuesday, where you saw overwhelming majorities in both the city of Ann Arbor, city of Ypsilanti, and Ypsilanti Township, saying they wanted to participate, they wanted to fund the ride, AAATAs, and improve the routes and efficiencies of that, that service. So, for this, for this particular fiscal year, I am in favor of moving forward and of course, accessing the grant to provide us and our citizens, more importantly, with the additional bus. Mr. Fordice, do you care to comment at all?
Yeah, one thing I'd like to say about the grant, while it is, I think, something we definitely should take advantage of, there are restrictions on who can ride the bus funded by that grant. So, they have to be seniors, disabled, or traveling to work. So, I think within our current service, we do have people traveling outside of town who do not meet all of those. So, if you had a non-senior, non-disabled going to a doctor appointment.
Wouldn't qualify.
Would not qualify for that bus. So, what I thought I had on that was if we had the grant-funded bus, that would take care of, I think, the majority of our out-of-town customers, but then have the other bus, the traditional bus, not restricted to completely in-town, but allow that one to go out of town on the same fee structure as the grant bus, with those who are not eligible for the grant bus. And I think we'd see a much more concentration of, of the in-town bus staying in-town, but it would allow for that, that occasional out-of-town trip for folks who don't meet the grant requirements.
And have you run that by the folks at People's Express?
I have not, but it would be, I mean, it's essentially the way they work now.
Right.
You know, it's, any Saline resident can travel out of town on that bus. It would just.
My only concern is an interesting notion, it's an interesting idea. My concern is, or one of the reasons why I find the grant so appealing, is it was sort of guaranteeing that, that, that existing van, that existing bus remain in the community. So, I'd like to maybe crunch the data and learn a little bit more about what you're proposing, because I, I wouldn't want to see that bus then leave the community for long periods of time.
Right. Well, I can give you some data on that right now.
Okay.
I don't have this broken down. So, in, in February of this year, there were 229 rides. 140 of them were out of town, 89 were in-town. I don't know, I don't think that, I think that's a slightly heavier out-of-town balance than a typical month, but of those 229 rides, 41 were seniors, they would qualify. 113 were handicapped seniors, they would qualify. 33 were handicapped, they would qualify. And 42 were neither handicapped nor seniors. Now, I don't know if they were going to work or not. So, out of 229, at most, there'd be 42 who couldn't ride the, the grant bus.
Mr. Girba.
I mean, that's kind of what, I agree with the mayor, that we should be leveraging this grant. Does that mean you have to maintain two separate buses, or can people that don't qualify under that grant still ride on that? You sound like you have two buses going, one that's grant-eligible and one that's not. Am I just making that?
It will actually be two separate buses. One doing the, the out-of-town trips and one focused either exclusively in-town or focused in-town.
But, I mean, the idea was that we should be saving money because of this grant. We should not have, and then whatever, you know, because of people that were riding underneath our previous arrangement, I would think that that, those funds should have been freed up to allow us to do more expanded operations, either here in the city or to allow those individuals to ride on that bus. But I agree with the mayor that having the bus that works in the city also go out of the city would be a, kind of a detriment to what we would like to achieve in-town, I think.
Well, it, I mean, it has been, I don't know if you want to say a problem, but as, as Mr. Anderson said when he was here, when the bus is out of town, it's not in-town. So.
Well, and that's why if we have two buses.
Yeah.
That we could provide support out of what we do, what we've already have provided for the last years, for the bus that actually is eligible for that grant, because there should be some way to track it, because it was very confusing what he was explaining. But from my perspective, I think if we can figure out how to leverage this to the best, we should be able to get a lot more out of our, out of our funds.
Right. I think we would, we would get a lot more rides with the grant-funded bus and the locally-funded bus. And I think at a, their estimates were that when the bus, the current single bus has been out of town, there were 600 rides over the course of the year that they had to turn down because the bus was doing an out-of-town run. So, we could pick up those 600 rides. The only, the concern I have is, is that, and I don't know, I don't think we have enough statistics to determine this for certain, that there are people with out-of-town, out-of-town needs who don't meet the grant bus requirements.
And those are the ones I was hoping that potentially we could somehow use the funds that we've previously identified for in-town, or however we're doing that, to help support people to ride that bus that is grant-eligible. If you're saying there's a separate bus that's only supposed to be using grant-eligible individuals?
Okay. So, you, so a funding mechanism to put non-grant-eligible people on the grant bus?
I think his concern is the same as mine, which is, well, first of all, we need to determine from People's Express staff if, if what you're proposing is even feasible. But I, I think the goal would be that we want a bus within the corporate limits of the city of Saline for the entire shift. We don't want to see it, as much as humanly possible, leave, especially considering that if we're going to be accessing these grant dollars, we have a, a bus that'll be doing that. However, I do understand your concern that there's now going to be a group of people that simply will not be eligible to leave, leave town. Something to, something to ask. Mr. Burgoyne and then Mayor Portem Tihar.
I seem to remember the gentleman from People's Express saying that if they get the grant bus, we cannot also use the other bus to go out of town.
We need that. Well, we'll, we'll have Jeff confirm that.
I seem to recall that, but even if he didn't say that, I would agree with you and Mr. Girba, that I don't really want that other bus to leave town.
Ms. Tahar.
Yes, I was going to say the same thing. I think we don't, under the current circumstances, and if we do some sort of a mix, we don't have, we don't really know what the demand is for transportation within the city limits at this point, because of non-availability of the bus, turned-down rides, people may not call because they think they have to call three days in advance, because this is what the website says. So, I, I would definitely agree about keeping the in-town bus in-town, in part, because I think it's the only way we're going to find out what kind of, what kind of demand there might be. And, and the other thing I will say is I would not be in favor of having more than a one-year contract on this. I'm, I'm disappointed that we don't have any alternatives to People Express, People's Express to look at. I wish we did, but since we don't, I, I guess I would, I would go with a year contract, but I'm not especially happy about that.
Any other questions? Okay. Oh, Mr. Burgoyne, I'm sorry.
Just a comment, more than a question. If somebody is not elderly, not handicapped, not income-eligible and so forth, whatever their categories are.
Not going to work. Has to be a work, work-bound.
Going to work.
Yeah.
Or whatever their categories are, which I think are legitimate categories, or if you fall outside of that, I believe there are other shuttles similar to the airport shuttle, or taxis, or, or borrow a car, or other ways of accomplishing. If you're not in one of the at-risk or difficult categories, I guess you have to make your way.
So, this will come back as an action item at our next meeting. Jeff, you have, I guess, a little bit of homework to do, not much. And of course, if council members have subsequent questions, concerns, please, please connect with Mr. Fordice. Thank you, sir.
All right.
If there's nothing further to come, under the discussion portion of the agenda this evening, oh, Mr. Girba, I'm sorry.
Did I miss something about susscontannial planning? Did we take that off?
We just removed it, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. If there's nothing further, then, we move on to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question a city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. There are no citizen comments. So, our next meeting is on May 19th, that's a week from today, with a work meeting at 6:00 to discuss our CIP streets and the Building and Engineering Department. Our regular meeting will follow at 7:30. We have a tentative special work meeting related to the budget on May 22nd at, at 6:00 PM. And then our next meeting will be on June 2nd with a tentative work meeting and then, of course, a regular meeting at 7:30. We've already excused Mr. Rhodes, so we can dispense with that motion. At this time, I would seek a motion to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing the potential purchase of real estate. City council will not reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session. Is there a motion?
It's moved.
Move to adjourn into closed session by Mr. Girba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, is that Mayor Portem Tihar?
No, that's Cybo Kene.
Okay, the clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Tahar?
Yes.
Councilmember Girba?
Yes.
Councilmember Cybo Kene?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Burgoyne?
Yes.
Mayor Morrow?
Yes. We are convened into closed session at 9:23 PM.